Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. I'd like to cohead and call the Brooklyn City Council meeting to order. Mary Jo B. Lee, please call the roll.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Here.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Aaron Borowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Grodick.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you join me in prayers we have for this evening? Father, we are grateful for the opportunity that we have to come together as the leaders of this city. We thank you for the residents that have chosen to be with us here in person tonight, as well as those that have joined us by livestream. We thank you for the privilege it is to be able to serve in this capacity. Lord, we have much going on in our city right now, a lot of decisions to be made. We certainly are living in troubled times with what's going on in our economy and things around us and around the world. So we pray that you please help our minds to be clear, that we'll make good decisions for the residents here in our community. And we thank you for Brooklyn. We thank you for our mayor and the leadership team that she has around her, and for our safety forces and the wonderful job that they do day in, day out, keeping us safe. We thank you for our service workers, as they've had to clear much snow here in the last few weeks. And we thank you for the safety you've given thus far. We pray that will continue. And pray that you please continue to bless Brooklyn. Please keep your hand of blessing upon it. And play our meeting tonight and bring honor and glory to you in Jesus' name. Amen. At this time, we have the approval of the minutes. We have two minutes, meetings worth of minutes to review. The first one is from our meeting of January the 10th. Are there any comments or questions on that?
Move to approve.
To approve the minutes from January 10th, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Same.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky. Sue Grodick.
Yes.
And then the minutes from our last meeting, January 24th. Move to approve.
Second. To approve the minutes from January 24th, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky. Sue Grodick.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience isn't as safe for the good and well of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Rob Slattery, 660 Zerbe Cyrus Drive. Just have a couple of questions. First off, I'd like to know how many council members knew or know the administration spent $6,600 getting a life coach for the secretary of the building department? Number two, I'd like to ask the mayor, how is that decided? Which employee is going to get a life coach and which employee is just going to be terminated? There's been union members terminated in different departments, and this employee has a record of discourteous service to the public, and she gets a life coach. Another person, from what I was told, in the building department was discourteous to you and just walked away from you during the meeting, and she was terminated for insubordination. So the message that sends to me is, an employee can talk to the public anyway, she'll get away with it, but God forbid she said, "An employee does something to you." And then lastly, I'd like to know if there's an update. Can this maybe go to Mr. Butler? I asked him, did you have an estimate of when that records request may be fulfilled?
No. We're still working on it.
And does the city have plans to contact all of the residents on Ridge Road West Side from Hurricane Alley and then Manoa on the west side, and let them know that their property's under discussion? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Don McMahon. I'm sure we all know that. I was going to ask you, Mayor, you told me when I had my incident with Don Neal, I wouldn't even know these people if it wasn't for Don Neal. I would know nothing. He told me that the next write-up she got, he was going to fire her. Am I lying? I'm just asking the question. Has she had any more sense? I have a good friend that lived in this town for 25 years that called for the program to fix his house up. Nicest people in the world. She talked to them like dogs. They moved. They're going to Independence and they're selling their house. They've already bought a house in Independence. They said they don't think they deserve this kind of treatment. I could go on all day for the people that are afraid to do it. I wouldn't even have a problem with you if it wasn't for Don Neal. I wouldn't know him if it wasn't for Don Neal. I wouldn't know anybody in this room. I have too much to do. I'm begging you, Mayor, do something about this lady. You're showing weakness. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, now move on to reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin this evening with the committee of the whole. We did have a rather lengthy agenda this evening. We had two guests that were with us. One was a representative from Panzico, which is a construction company for the new city center project. And tonight, they were here to discuss furniture. And as we've seen with everything else, the cost of furniture has skyrocketed, and so we're going to see a significant increase in the cost for that. We have not received legislation on what those exact amounts will be yet, but it will be a significant increase of what the original proposed budget was. And then we had Mr. Foley, who's the director of sustainability for the county here, to discuss the potential of the county creating their own essentially power company with microgrids. And so he was here to kind of have an opening statement about that. One of the potential locations they're looking at is here in the city of Brooklyn. And we ran out of time with Mr. Foley. I did ask him to come back at a later time. We'll have probably a public safety environmental committee meeting to discuss this further. It piqued my interest, but a lot of questions that were already asked, and so a lot of questions that need to be answered as well. And so thank both these groups, or Panzico for being here, as well as Mr. Foley. And again, we'll get something set up for a meeting to discuss that further. Regards to our agenda this evening, council does have three notifications from the administration in regards to grants that were awarded. The first one was a $5,000 grant from NOPEC, and this will be used to help fund the concert and movie series that we have here in the park each summer. So we're looking forward to that when the weather hopefully gets a little bit warmer. And then two other grants that were received, both for the police department. One was for $100,000 from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, and this is for the body cameras that the police wear, as well as another $28,166 from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justices. And again, that's for the body cameras as well as dash cams. And so we have the equipment. We're just waiting for the software to be installed, and the chief believes that will take place sometime in April, if I remember correctly. So that'll be good. And so also, the chief wanted to thank Sergeant Knapp, or excuse me, Lieutenant Knapp. It was Sergeant Knapp for a long time, Lieutenant Knapp, for his work on that. He was the one that wrote both of those grants, and so we're very grateful to receive those funds to be able to get that equipment for our police officers. Next was the bid approval for the 2022 Streets Program. We did go out to bid. We received six bids back for that program. The lowest and best bid was for $948,285.28 from RMH Concrete and Foundations. And this bid includes resurfacing for Rabbit Run, Westbrook Drive, and Hammond Avenue, as well as concrete repair on Boxwood Circle, Autumn Lane, and Ivywood Drive, as well as some spot repairs for Tiedemann Road. And if council approves that tonight, RMH Concrete will receive those. That bid approval, which the work will take place starting sometime this spring and summer. Next was Resolution 2022-3. This is authorizing the acceptance of a NOPEC 2022 Energized Community Grant, and this will be used for street light upgrades or for the fire station lighting improvement project. Next is Resolution 22-4. This is authorizing a community cost sharing agreement with the Kauahoe County Soil and Water Conservation District. And this is an implementation of a conservation program to prevent pollution. This is something that we started last year and look to continue this year. Next was Resolution 22-5. This is authorizing the city engineer of our city to prepare and execute a application with the Safe Routes to School infrastructure funding for the Brooklyn Safe Routes to School Initiative, and to submit that to the Ohio Department of Transportation. And the entire project cost for this is $157,156, and we are looking to replace all of the flashing school zone signs throughout the city, at the various locations throughout the city. And if we are awarded that grant, we'll pay for that. There is a chance that the engineering costs would not be covered. That would be $24,000 and change. The city would be responsible for that portion if indeed the grant is approved and we do get the funding for that. All three of those that I just mentioned, Resolution 22, 3, 4, and 5, are on first reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules this evening. On first reading tonight is Resolution 22-6. This extends the moratorium that we passed last year, Resolution 2021-25, on the acceptance and processing of granting of applications for zoning, occupancy, and/or building permits for small box discount stores for a period of 180 days. As we discussed when this was first passed last year, we're in the process of rewriting our zoning code. And so until that zoning code is rewritten, we have extended, or look to extend this moratorium to not issue permits for these small box discount stores. Next is Resolution 2022-7. This is on first reading, hope to pass by suspension of the rules. And this is a resolution electing the standard allowance available on the revenue loss prevention of the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund established under the American Rescue Plan Act. The Treasury Department has kind of changed their rules for utilizing this fund. We're going to continue using it to offset the costs that we have for our public safety personnel costs during the COVID time. And this will allow for cleaning reporting, both to the federal government as well as to the public. And as of right now, there's no change in how we're going to use these funds. Then the next four are kind of sister ordinances, Ordinance 2022-2, 3, 4, and 5. These are all on first reading, and therefore the issuance of notes for the first three and bonds, a bond for the last one. The first note is a note of $601,000, and this is a note rolling forward from last year to pay for the city center roof that was completed. And we, right now, that balance stands at $601,000. We have a proposed payment of $30,000 that will be made on that this year for a new amount of $571,000. The next ordinance, 2022-3, is for $1,580,000, and this is for the cost of American Road that was done a few years ago. And again, the proposed payment here will be for $200,000, so the new amount would be $1,380,000. And then 22-4 is for the note for the Roadown Alley project that was done, and the current amount is $560,000. We do plan on paying down half of that this year. The new amount will be $280,000. And then lastly, which is a new one for this year, is providing for the issuance of a bond at a not-to-exceed amount of $1.1 million, and this is for the city service center's garage. And that bond will be amortized over 10 years. And that's all we had on our agenda this evening at the committee of the whole meeting. Those meetings do take place at 6:15 prior to the start of all council meetings. We'll now move on to our domestic abuse commission. Councilman Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. February is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. Educating teens on what a healthy relationship is is so important to breaking the cycle. The behaviors that are learned at home aren't always the most healthy ones, so being able to teach kids at the time when they start dating what a healthy relationship really looks like is so important. Healthy relationships consist of respect, honesty, trust, communication, boundaries, and consent. Teens who want to know more might need help. Can text LOVEIS, all one word, to 22522 for free confidential support from the organization called Love is Respect. That ends my report.
Thank you. Next up is our recreation board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. The next recreation board meeting will be held on Wednesday, February 23rd. The rec center meeting room is 7:00 PM. Close your report.
Thank you. Legislative update, Councilman Borowski.
Thank you. The new year brings new laws to Ohio, but one directly affects tens of thousands of people living in assisted living facility. Esther's Law, which was signed into law by Governor Mike DeWine, it permits cameras and other electronic surveillance devices to be installed by residents or their families and guardians inside a resident's room. The law is named after Esther Piscor. Her family says they placed a known camera inside her Cleveland Anderson homeroom and repeatedly caught her being abused by staff members. The law officially goes into effect on the 23rd of March, but organizations are already preparing plans, and residents and their loved ones are encouraged to install devices before that date if and where possible. That's my legislative update.
Interesting. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Next up is our planning commission, Councilman Grodick.
Thank you. There was no February meeting because we didn't have anything on our agenda, so the next scheduled meeting is March 3rd, 6:00 PM here at City Hall.
Thank you. Next up is economic development, Councilman Selhertz.
Thank you. The Brooklyn Community Improvement Corporation, or CIC, held its annual meeting last Monday, February 7th, at 5:30 via Zoom. Present were Chairperson Mayor Gallagher, Secretary Kathleen Pucci, members Deborah Tomusco and Andy Selhertz. Treasurer John Rattin was absent and excused. The agenda consisted of approval of the minutes from the annual meeting of February 1st, 2021. The second item on the agenda was election of trustees. Up for election were Mayor Gallagher and Andy Selhertz, both were nominated and reelected for an additional three-year term. Officers for the 2022 year are the following: Chairperson Mayor Gallagher, Secretary Kathleen Pucci, Treasurer John Rattin. Next item on the agenda was the approval of the 2021 financial statements. And the last item on the agenda was a brief discussion held with questions and answers with the economic development director, Jeremy Rowan, about projects along Memphis and Tiedemann. Meeting adjourned at approximately 5:48 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Selhertz. Next up is our school board liaison, Councilman Pucci.
Thank you. The next school board meeting is tomorrow, Tuesday, February 15th, at 6:00 PM in Room 173 at the high school. This is a public meeting, and all are welcome.
Next is our fair housing committee rep, Councilman Ryan Shaki.
Thanks. The Fair Housing Center for Rights and Research did do a training with our building department. The members of the fair housing board were unable to attend due to the time that it was at, but it was a great refresh from the 2019 training that the full membership of the board was at, along with the building department. That ends my report.
Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals is set to meet this Thursday, February 17th, to hear the following. A request from Jenny Candares for a three-inch variance in the required minimum clearance between fences of 18 inches at 4116 Parkside Drive. A request from Bert Edwards for an 8% variance, the allowable area occupied by the sum total of all accessory structures of 60% of the rear yard at 10117 bit off-road. A request from Bert Edwards for additional accessory structure at 10117 bit off-road. And then a request from Bert Edwards for additional 296 square foot to the allowable 144 square foot for accessory structure at 10117 bit off-road. Again, that takes place this Thursday, February 17th, in the conference room, I believe. That's all we have for our reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll now move on to reports of council. We start tonight with Mrs. Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. First off, Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. Speaking of hearts, February is American Heart Month. University Hospitals does have an upcoming webinar in regards to the latest aspirin guidelines to prevent heart disease. Guidance was issued by the U.S. Preventative Services Task Force. It's changing with newer research, so you can learn about the latest science research and what they're saying, and also there's a Q&amp;A option available as well. It will be taking place online on February 22nd at noon. I was unable to find, I get their emails, I was unable to find easily on their website, but if you contact me, I can forward you the registration if anybody is interested. I can be reached at 440-391-4832, or by email, mryanshaki@brooklynohio.gov. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Selhertz.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to Mr. Verba and our service department once again for working on getting the main streets, sidewalks, senior drives, sidewalk and senior drives plowed within this past two-week period. Those guys have been more than busy. If you paid attention to him, though, there was one problem, and it's not good. At the last meeting, he mentioned we went from down from seven plows down to three. Even at the night at a council meeting, there was one that had a flat tire. It was on Burke Park. For a city not, for a city being known having their streets in good shape after snowfalls, three plows is not going to cut it. In the budget for the last year, the service department was approved to get a new salt truck. They went out to bid April 2021, asked Mr. Verba about the status on it. He looked into it. He reported back to administration, and that got passed on to council. We're actually going to get it in June or July of 2022. That comes out to 15 or 16 months plus from the time of ordering it. In his budget for 2023, Mr. Verba's asking for another new salt truck to rotate his equipment. It actually replaces a 2002 truck. I've talked to him, Mr. Verbuys, the mayor, and a few of you on council, and my hope would be that council would start to approve the process for bidding out for a new salt truck. I know it's in the 2023 budget, and we haven't even looked at it or worked at it, but considering the lead times, the way costs have gone, are going up, and we've talked about cost on city center, just everything else for furniture and everything else, it might be advantageous for us as a city to start looking into that for now. Another thing, on the lighter side, Brooklyn Athletic Boosters and the Post-Pomp Committee is still holding their annual night at the races on Saturday, February 26th. Doors open at 5:30. There still are a few single-seat tickets available, a couple of couple seats, couple seats available. Or if you want to place an add to the program, call Kelly Supik at 216-978-8453. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci.
Good evening. First, I'd like to offer my condolences to the family of Mr. Bill Carson, who passed away at the age of 92. Mr. Carson was a longtime resident who was also a sergeant in our police auxiliary unit. He was a gifted musician and a member of the popular band, The Swinging Bavarians. He also used his musical talents to play taps at veterans' funerals. Mr. Carson was a very kind man. Over the years, when I had the opportunity, I always enjoyed talking with him. He knew what was going on in the city, and he always had really good questions. He lived a full life, and he was well taken care of by his family. I have a report on the Safe Routes to School. As Mr. Van Kirk mentioned, we have Resolution 2022-5 to apply for the infrastructure grant from ODOT. This is an opportunity to replace our outdated signals and to add some new signals, where we currently only have traffic signs. This is going to enhance the awareness of our school zones and also increase the safety of our students. For the Brooklyn City schools, we're keeping the existing mast arms that are on bit off and then just replacing the electric signs that are mounted on them. We'll be adding solar flashing signs on Burr Wall and Southwood, where we currently just have the regular signs with no lights. In the St. Thomas More area, we'll be replacing the electric signs. There's two on North Amber and two on Ridge Road. The total estimated cost is $157,156. This does include 10% for contingency and also a 5% figure for inflation. Mr. Selhertz gave the report of the annual meeting of the Brooklyn Community Improvement Corporation. I would just add that in our annual financial report, that the value of the properties is $298,084. This increased because we added the former Speedway property, which is at Roadown and Memphis. I also participated in the zoning code work session that was held virtually last Monday. It was a good session. We had an opportunity to ask questions, and I would encourage residents to please participate. We need and want your input, and the information from this session is on the website. Mr. Slattery, just to answer your questions, I did not know about the $6,600. I did contact Mr. Butler, and also I spoke with the mayor, I think it was last week. You know, first, people have to understand that we can't discuss matters of personnel in an open session, but I feel comfortable just sharing that, you know, I do understand issues with progressive discipline and being able to demonstrate that the city did our part in training or coaching. Based on the information on the consultant, I have absolutely no doubt that this person is highly qualified and, you know, very capable. But at the end of the day, my personal opinion is that this is too much for us to spend on something like this. Your question about Ridge Road, I'm guessing that that is relating to the zoning code meeting. So what I would say to that is, first of all, there's nothing finalized, that this is all a project that's in the works. There are actually two, well, is it two areas or three that are proposed for a change? One is actually part of Manoa, the west end of Manoa, and then there has, and again, a proposal. And then some properties on Ridge Road. I guess my only comment would be that if it ends up changing, it would be exactly like the situation we currently have on Tiedemann Road with the properties across from the Plain Dealer back in 1992, when the zoning code was updated. Those went from residential to limited industrial. And what happens when something like that occurs is the current uses, which is residential, they're grandfathered in. And, you know, you can see that most of those homes are still there. Some have been bought and sold over the years. Others have been improved upon, including being able to take advantage of the CRA that was in that area. So if it happens, and that's an if, I don't believe that the residents would have anything to be concerned about, because it's not like the city would be coming in and saying they could no longer be there. Sometimes what happens is it provides people a different type of opportunity to sell, if they do want to sell their home, where they could get more money for it if it's commercial. As far as the salt truck, I do support Mr. Selhertz moving forward with that earlier. The other thing is, Happy Valentine's Day and Happy Birthday to Councilman Selhertz. And that completes my report.
Mr. Borowski.
First of all, a Happy Birthday, Andy. I know that we all send Happy Birthday wishes to you. I also agree with moving forward on the salt truck. I think that's a good idea, especially with costs just constantly going up. And, you know, with the meeting for the zoning on Monday, Sue and Ms. Pucci gave me, especially since I live on Manoa, a lot more clear ideas of what we might be dealing with. And I know my wife and I were personally concerned, and, you know, now there's, we're more eased about it, because like you've said, something could happen, and then 20, 30 years, nothing takes place. So again, I agree with her. We need the community involved. There is information online. We're going to have further meetings coming up. So again, just please do your part and be involved. And that's that.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky.
Okay, good evening. Happy Birthday to my friend Andy Selhertz. And also I agree with the salt truck, Andy. I think it's a very good idea. These past couple of weeks have been challenging with all the snow and ice that we had. I did receive many complaints, and I mean many complaints, from our residents on the handling of the snow removal on our streets and especially the sidewalks. I understand that many of you were stuck in your home or were unable to get out of the driveways. I want to remind and ask all residents to please be patient when it comes to the sidewalks being cleared. I know many of you said that the driveways were blocked by the snow plows pushing the snow back into the driveways. I do understand your frustration. As I was cleaning my own driveway, our city crews did an amazing job in getting out in a timely fashion and doing their best to remove the snow. There was just so much snow accumulations to keep up with, and there really wasn't anywhere to put it. Our number one priority is always safety. We will continue to strive to do a better job in the future. I mentioned the Mayor Katie Gallagher and Fire Chief Kevin Paul. It would be helpful to have hydrant markers on all fire hydrants to make them visible to everyone on high snowfall accumulations. I know you responded to me and is looking into this. I believe the use of hydrant markers will not impede the use of the fire hydrant, as some cities use these, especially with snow that does mount high. Being I had again numerous calls on these fire hydrants being buried in the snow. Chief Paul, where do you stand, and what's your thoughts on these markers?
Hi. Hello.
Councilman, I did take a look at those. Um, like I said...
Like I replied to my email, we do have our, our software that we have for our dispatching. We do have an app, and I'll be happy to show you after our meeting. But our hydrants, each one of our hydrants are located on our, our map of our city. So we do have those GIS, they've been all put in. So we kind of have fairly a decent idea of where they're at, if they're buried or not.
Well, let me ask you this. If you had a marker sticking up in the air being, and they're coming down the street real quick, wouldn't it be more useful, seeing that marker instantly get to that fire hydrant?
Sure, it would be, it would be helpful.
Especially in the areas where they're really getting buried, because there's some more mounting up pretty high.
Yes, certainly. So that's something that I'll take a look at, and I'll reach out to Director Verba, see if that's something that we could be interested in. My concern is them getting broken off during the snow. But I just wanted to reiterate to you that we do have the capability of knowing where a hydrant is within...
Because I know in some areas where they're closer to the corners, where they really mount up to snow, especially if it's an area where probably those areas, I know they kind of look a little, you know, sticking up in the air, but I think in some areas, we could probably use them where...
Absolutely.
You know, hydrant, I don't know if you want to say be more used in that area, but more common areas.
That concludes my report. Thank you. Good to have you back, Kevin. Thank you, Mrs. Burus.
Thank you. First, I'd like to wish a slightly belated Lunar New Year to our many Asian families in our district. Lunar New Year began this year on February 1st. As a teacher in our district, every year I'm seeing an increase in families that celebrate Lunar New Year. And we've had a lot of fun at school, learning about this holiday time and sharing it with our families in our school. So I'd just like to wish our families in Brooklyn a happy Lunar New Year. And, Mr. Slattery, I was going to mention what a great council session we had with Liz from McBride Dale Clarion. But you did make a good point. You know, from running volunteer organizations, as well as a lot of us know, that sometimes a personal invitation needs to be extended before someone takes notice. I feel like our city has been very transparent during the master plan sessions and during the zoning sessions, but maybe a personal hand, you know, notice to these handful of houses in these two areas that are being considered changing the zoning would be helpful to them. But everything is online. All of the maps, the sessions, even the really, really informative session that council had last Monday is online and available. There will be more coming up in March and April, and maybe we can, maybe, Mr. Rowan, maybe we could identify those houses. I can't see you over there, but I know, oh, okay. I can't, I can't see him over there anyway. So maybe just sending these homes a personal notice invitation to come to one of our public sessions would be helpful. Sometimes it does take that personal invitation to get the input, because I know as somebody on this, I would like to feel that we're getting the input from all residents, but especially residents that may be impacted by changes in our zoning. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would just like to reiterate what Sue was just saying. I wasn't able to attend the council meeting with the zoning update last week, because I was out of town. But I watched it on YouTube. It's very well done. It's very easy to follow. There's the PowerPoints right there with it. So a lot of good, really good information in there. And so I would encourage residents to go watch it for yourself. It is kind of long, right? But to go watch it for yourself and get the information, I think that's a good idea, too, of, you know, notifying the residents that will be directly affected by that, as Manoa also. I mean, we follow that on the other side of Manoa from where I live, I live on the other side, so it's a good idea. All right, that's all I have. I've talked enough tonight, so Mayor, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Seltzerz. First, I would like to pass my condolences to the family of Gary Sedemire, who passed away on February 4th. Gary was a longtime auxiliary. He, you probably knew him as a Santa around Christmas time. I'm going to pass this beginning part over to Chief Milky, so he can say a few words. So he's probably the closest person to Gary here, and so I want to make sure that they're...
Yeah, after a couple of years, Gary's, last couple of years, Gary's health's kind of fallen bad. He passed on February 4th after a long stink in, sting in the hospital. He was there, I believe, right around Thanksgiving. So Gary did so much for our community. Thirty-six years as Santa Claus on the sleigh. Never said no, ever, unless he already said yes to somebody else. He works countless side jobs for, for the police department. He sat on down-powered lines, came in and directed traffic, did whatever he was asked as a police officer. He just loved the Brooklyn community. He told a story about walking into City Hall in 1970, 1971, to pay his taxes, and the police chief at the time recruited him to be an auxiliary officer, and after that, it was all downhill. Fifty years as a police, auxiliary police officer for our city. Mr. Parker worked with him for many of those years as a Santa Claus, just a staple of our community. I can't, I know when I got hired, he was already here for 20-some years, 25 years, I believe. So he's going to be greatly missed by our police department and, and the community unto itself, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I'd like to echo Andy Sellers' comments. I want to give a shout out to the service department. I saw them out at 5:00 this morning, picking up, you know, the snowfall from last night. It's been a, it's been a happy winter over the last few weeks, and I commend them. It's not hard being out there at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, 12-hour shifts, coming back for, going home for a little bit, having to come back. So thank you for all you guys do to keep our streets clear. We talked about city center a little tonight, and Ron talked about the increasing costs. I just want to put some numbers to that. Right now, the delta, the overage is 336,792. That is with the furniture. That was nearly double what we expected. We did have some allowances, but that is that difference. Two factors give me a little hope. One, I was able to put in for demolition funding through the state for one of the expenditures that we have on our long-term budget. We have 444, 445,000 to demolish this particular building, so securing the demolition funds that will cover 75% of the costs. So I'm hopeful that we're able to secure that money. And then additionally, we're able to redirect about $330,000 from the community cost share money out of regional sewer district to cover some of the detention basin and different aspects with that project over the city center. So hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to come in back where we were with those two items and give us a little room. Also, I don't think this was mentioned, but I want to make sure it is. Our road project, this particular year, we got very early on our bids because of these rising costs that we just keep seeing over and over. Despite that, we were the first city out to bid, and it was still $25,000 over the engineer's estimate. So this is just the continual theme of what we're seeing. So I want to make a big shout out to people like Lieutenant Knapp, who are securing grants, because it's helping wash some of these increased costs. I was at a mayor's and manager's meeting last week, and we were one of the, we were one of two cities in this region that secured that grant. So a lot of eyes were looking at me to give me credit, but it's really the police department that did an awesome job of securing that money right out of the gate when it was available. I want to also let everyone know all the annual reports are done, so they're currently available on the city's website, if you just go to the particular department you want to check out. Also, a lot of conversation about the zoning. I just want to reiterate the website, brooklynohzoning.com. That's brooklynohzoning.com. You can find everything you want to know about the zoning from the beginning until the recent meetings. And it is a great resource to get caught up. And people have said over a couple of areas that we marked with the hashtags of areas of discussion, that's what they are right now, they're areas of discussion. A couple, a couple of these properties the city bought, one of these properties has been a discussion point for residents in a particular area over and over again, and it was zoned a long time ago, apartment buildings. And so we heard loud and clear that might be, that is an issue, and so we want that discussion to happen right now. So it's not necessarily, at this point, a proposed change. We're way too early in the process to call it a proposed change. It's a discussion point. We want to hear from residents. It was flagged for a discussion point at the public meeting, at the advisory meeting, and from city council, because we want, we see opportunity here, and we see a potential long-term change, and we want to make sure we have that, because now's the time to do it. If we're going to go through all this effort and time to look at these things, we should be talking about them. Whether they change or not, we should at least be talking about them before we get to the endpoint. So I urge you to check all that information out. I know all this information was, once again, in the city newsletter that's about to get mailed out soon. As we keep tracking the points that we're at, and I encourage people to come to the public meetings, we can send out, if it is deemed that this goes beyond a talking point and this, we're seeing this is a realistic change, we can send out letters, of course, to the area of Manoa West and Ridge Road. We just have to figure out the timing of that. I'm not going to send out letters saying this is happening and create a lot of angst when it might not happen, so. The other matter that came before here were employment matters. I don't make it a practice to talk about employment matters. When an employee makes a mistake, and we deal with a lot of those, you know, we deal with a set of human beings that work in this building, and it is not a practice, although public and every public, every personnel file is public, you know, it's not a practice to put everything out there on display right here for the public to see every part of the process. I would say in generalities, an employment process, if it reaches to my level, I goes up to an HR consultant for a recommendation, and I seek legal counsel as to what are the next steps possible for any kind of potential discipline. We have, in the past, hired consultants for positions. They don't always look alike, because the problems are not always alike for the employee. So at that recommendation, a consultant was hired from our HR consultant, and I stand by that decision. So far, it's been a very good decision, and I stand by the decisions we've held in the past. So I think that's all I would have to say about that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have no directives reports this evening, so we'll now move on to our legislation. The first three items that we have are notifications, the first of which is a $5,000 NOPEC notification for the Recreation Department. And as I mentioned in the committee of the whole report, those funds will be used for the summer concert and movie, movies in the park. The next two are grants for the police department, one for $100,000 from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, the other for $28,166.20 from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice, and those are for body cam and dashboard cams for our police department. So notifying council of those, I'm very grateful to receive those grants. Next is the 2022 road program the mayor just mentioned. Again, this total is $948,285.28, and this will be awarded and approved tonight to RMH Concrete and Foundations for resurfacing on Rabbit Run, Westbrook, and Hammond, concrete repair on Boxwood Circle, Autumn Lane, and Ivywood, and then some spot repairs on Tiedemann Road.
Move to approved a bid from RMH Concrete and Foundation, Inc.
Second.
To approve the bid, Ron Van Kirk...
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki...
Yes.
Andy Selhertz...
Yes.
Kathy Pucci...
Yes.
Aaron Buruski...
Yes.
Kevin Tansky...
Yes.
Sue Groddick...
Yes.
The next three resolutions are on first reading, but I hope to pass by suspension of the rules this evening due to the timing issue of them. The first of which is authorizing, is Resolution 2022-3, authorizing all actions necessary to accept the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council or the NOPEC 2022 Energize Community Grant, and these funds will be used for the street lighting upgrades in the city or for the fire station lighting improvement. Any comments or questions?
Can you dispel or suspend the rules?
To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk...
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki...
Yes.
Andy Selhertz...
Yes.
Kathy Pucci...
Yes.
Aaron Buruski...
Yes.
Kevin Tansky...
Yes.
Sue Groddick...
Yes.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk...
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki...
Yes.
Andy Selhertz...
Yes.
Kathy Pucci...
Yes.
Aaron Buruski...
Yes.
Kevin Tansky...
Yes.
Sue Groddick...
Yes.
Resolution 2022-4, authorizing a community caution agreement with the Kaha Gah soil and water conservation district. Again, these funds are used for the implementation of conservation programs to prevent pollution in the city, and this will be a continuation from the work that we started with this last year. Any comments or questions? Can you dispel or suspend the rules?
To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk...
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki...
Yes.
Andy Selhertz...
Yes.
Kathy Pucci...
Yes.
Aaron Buruski...
Yes.
Kevin Tansky...
Yes.
Sue Groddick...
Yes.
Resolution 2022-5, authorizing the city engineer the city of Brooklyn to prepare and execute an application for Safe Routes to School infrastructure funding for the Brooklyn Safe Routes to School Initiative, and to submit same to the Ohio Department of Transportation. I talked about this in the committee of the whole, and Mrs. Pucci gave more details in her report. But this project cost is $157,156 that we will be applying for in this grant.
Can you dispel or suspend the rules?
To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk...
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki...
Yes.
Andy Selhertz...
Yes.
Kathy Pucci...
Yes.
Aaron Buruski...
Yes.
Kevin Tansky...
Yes.
Sue Groddick...
Yes.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk...
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki...
Yes.
Andy Selhertz...
Yes.
Kathy Pucci...
Yes.
Aaron Buruski...
Yes.
Kevin Tansky...
Yes.
Sue Groddick...
Yes.
On first reading this evening is Resolution 2022-6, extending a moratorium imposed by Resolution 2021-25 on the acceptance and processing granting of applications for zoning, occupancy indoor building permit approvals for small block discount stores, and the issuance of such approvals in the city of Brooklyn for a period of 180 days and declaring an emergency. Resolution 22-7 is on first reading, but I hope to pass by suspension of the rules, and Resolution electing the standard allowance available under the revenue loss prevention of the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund established under the American Rescue Plan Act. Any additional comments or questions for what was already discussed? Can you dispel or suspend the rules?
Second. To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk...
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki...
Yes.
Andy Selhertz...
Yes.
Kathy Pucci...
Yes.
Aaron Buruski...
Yes.
Kevin Dansky...
Yes.
Sue Groddick...
Yes.
The next four ordinances are on first reading, and have to do with notes and bonds. In the past, the fiscal office certificate was read in its entirety for all of these bonds being considered by the city. However, in speaking with our bond council, council is not required to read the certificate into the record. It must simply be presented to city council prior to taking action. Council received the fiscal officer's certificate for all of these bonds discussed, and we talked, that we talked about during the committee of the whole. Certificate was posted on board docs on Thursday for council and the public, therefore, council has been presented with these certificates before this legislation is considered. On first reading is ordinance 2022-2, providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $601,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of reconstructing, renovating, rehabilitating, and otherwise improving the roof or portions thereof of the city recreation center as designated in the plans approved or to be approved by council and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 2022-3, providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $1,580,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of extending American Road by constructing grating, draining, paving, constructing curbs, gutters, and driveway aprons, installing storm supers, and making other improvements as designated in the plans approved or to be approved by council and declaring emergency. Ordinance 2022-4, providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $560,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of reconstructing Rodone Road and Rodone Alley and declaring an emergency. And of course, these three projects are already complete. These notes roll forward every year. Council has to reconsider them. We anticipate locking in the rates for these notes sometime in April, and our best guess is the, the interest rate on them will be between 0.8 and 0.9% for this year for those notes. And then lastly, on first reading, and this one is new this year, this is, ordinance 2022-5, providing for the issue of the sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $1.1 million for the purpose of paying costs of reconstructing, renovating, rehabilitating, and otherwise improving the roof or portions thereof of the city service garage, together with all necessary apparatuses there, too. And this will, unlike the previous three, will actually be a fixed-rate bond for a period of 10 years. And again, the best guess, this will, interest rate... this will, interest rate will fall somewhere about 2.5%. Of course, that could change by the time we finalize this, but that is our, that is our best guess at this moment. All right, that is all the council has on their agenda this evening. Is any other member of council, the mayor, or the administration, anything to add?
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I'd just like to offer my condolences to the Suddenmeyer family and our police department. There's not too many people who have the type of dedication. We've got a few, but not too many that have the dedication that Mr. Suddenmeyer did, and I appreciate everything he did for our community.
Anyone else make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
To adjourn, Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Groddick?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a blessed evening.